All right, we're right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. Let's invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. I will note that we do not have any public hearings planned this evening, so if you wanted to give council any input tonight, now is your chance. We do have a sign up sheet, but I will keep open forum open if there's anyone that wants to speak after those that have signed in have spoken. And first up is, is it Tyler, is it Ketchel?
Crushel.
Crushel. Could I have you join at the podium if you're interested in addressing council?
Yeah.
And if you could start with your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Tyler Crushel. I live at 24702 Hamlet Avenue, Forest Lake Address, City of Wyoming. I came here, and hopefully it's an appropriate night, to discuss one of the budget planning items that you had had last week regarding the Parks and Rec Board. I'm the field coordinator for our local Forest Lake Baseball Association. And in our baseball association, we have roughly about 200, a little more than 200 kids in our association that play baseball here in Forest Lake, specifically at Coolin Camp Park and at Fenway Fields. We have a couple of budgetary requests that I believe go through the park and recreation funding that I want, just wanted to highlight and maybe just to put a face to the, to the program a little bit and just thank the council for anything that they can do to help out with the, with the baseball fields and softball fields here in Forest Lake. We have, over at Fenway, we're in dire need of some maintenance on the dirt infield. They could use some ag lime and some maintenance through the city. And just coming here to, to state my opinion for the, hopefully that you guys can find a room in, in that budget to, to fund that. And another request that we had was for fencing over at Coolin Camp Park. We are at certain age levels, we're a little bit short of game playing fields for some of the boys, specifically the 12-year-olds and 13-year-olds. And some fencing out there, we could take one of those fields and make it into a game field, which, which would really help out. So I guess that's really all I had to say, and I hope, thank you guys for, for all your hard work on, on the budget. I know it's, it's a difficult process to do, and hopefully you can find it, find room for our requests.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Next, Sonia Kaiser. Welcome.
Thank you. I am here also, oh, Sonia Kaiser, do I need to state my address?
Address would be great, yeah.
Forty-seven Second Avenue Northeast in Forest Lake. I'm also here on behalf of the budgeting concerns for the parks. I just, a little background, I'm on the, on the treasurer for the Forest Lake Youth Football Board, and I have been on that since its beginning as its own entity. Prior to that, it was under the FLA umbrella. And my kids are all graduated from school, but they did play all through the youth programs when we moved here, starting in 2010. And baseball and football, and one of the things that has always been kind of talked about and excited about was getting lights out at Fenway. It's 13 years now, and the kids are all gone, but we still want lights at Fenway. So I'm hoping that this is going to be happening sooner than later. Just to give you some stats, we've got about, between all the communities that are in our program, we've got about 600 kids total. And when they come out to a game, it's their families, friends, they all come out to cheer on their, their players. We have the communities of Shisago, Princeton North Branch, and Cambridge Island, in addition to our own kids. And the sad thing is that the kids love to play under the lights, and we have a lot of night games. All of them are being played outside of our community this year. We have a total of 57 games being played outside of Forest Lake.
Wow.
In either Shisago, Princeton North Branch, or Cambridge Island, because they all have lighted fields. So I think that's a shame. I think it's a loss of potential revenue in the community. If we could have those games played here, families will go out to celebrate or draw their sorrows, either way, in our local restaurants and whatnot. And so I'm just hoping that we will find room in the budget soon to get some lights out at Fenway. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Hoagie.
Good evening. My name is Al Hoagie. I live at 21750 Forest Road here in Forest Lake, and love this community. I've been here over 40 years, and been a big part of what we've done with FLA, our Forest Lake Athletic Association. Two of my representatives from two of our sports were here tonight to speak also, on behalf of what the city does and has been doing for us. And I want to thank the city for that, first of all. First of all, and have provided us with Fenway that we've really gotten a lot of good use out of. However, with, just like with everything else with use, there becomes maintenance issues. And those maintenance issues have been developing for quite some time now. I, I want to thank Dave Adams since coming on a few years ago. We have a great working relationship together, and Dave is out there with his guys to take care of things whenever I ask and see the need for it. However, the big one, and I just want to make sure that it is still within the budget for this year. I know there was a lot of issues with budget this year that you had to cut, and I totally understand that as a business perspective. But the one dire need that we do, and we are still looking at, and we're hoping it's going forward, which I've been assured that it is, and I believe those that have already told me that in talking with Abby and also Dave, the ag lime situation out there. We just hosted the last state tournament this past weekend for a total of, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,800 girls. Great tournament, you know, 13, 14-hour days, both days. Lot of food consumption, lot of fun, and the weather held up okay for us. But our fields, the ag lime, is really, really distorted. I mean, it is to the point now where David brought us in some ag lime from what you stripped off of over at Belts Park. It's nowhere near what we need for filling in holes, and especially this weekend, I noticed when I was out there early on Sunday morning at 6:30, we needed to start filling holes and compact those so that we didn't have injuries from running, twisted ankles, knees, so on and so forth. So again, I want to make sure that we are going forward with that plan, which has been in the works for close to five years. It's well over, over deserved at this point. You know, FLA as a whole, we, we support pretty close to 3,000 kids within the Forest Lake area. And along with that, the undertaking of all the junior high sports now too, since the schools did away with those about seven years ago. So it's a big, big job for a community of this size to do what we do. And we appreciate, as I said before, what the city can do to help us with that, and also what the schools are doing. Both of you have stepped up, and we finally have melded the three of us to be able to do things together, which is the big concern and has been for the 40 years that I've been on the FLA board. And I want to see it continue to go forward and move forward with additional tasks that have to take place. Lights have been a big concern. Unfortunately, this next weekend, we had the top-tier state tournament scheduled for play out there, but given the time of the year with no lights, we had to cancel that. And that brought in a ton of revenue, as it did this summer, for the one weekend that we hosted their summer tournament. So I do think, and I pray, that the city will continue to keep looking at what our needs are out there. We want to try to help and partner with you on things that need to be done. I know one other issue that, on Saturday mornings, we, we're at overcapacity with parking out there. And, you know, it's real easy to figure it out when I know how many teams I got on the football field when I'm out there at eight o'clock in the morning, and then I got tournaments taking place in the softball complex. And two games that were played on Field Five, which is right across from the parking lot itself, we had in excess, I'm going to say in excess of 3,000 probably cars that were out there that weekend. And that happened for three weekends straight. That's a lot of cars. And I know our police are trying to do everything and be cordial as much as possible with parking issues, but they can only do so much too. So I am, Thursday I have a meeting with the schools. When FLA had the ice arena, we had a parking lot that we built above on the other side of the old coverall. And that parking lot alone held about 250 cars. And for whatever reason, they shut that parking lot down. People no longer are allowed to park there. I don't know what, what policies or politics that took place with it. I have a good idea, but I won't go down that road. But even with that additional parking lot to be used at this time, we don't need asphalt on it. It's a very good parking lot, and we just need the weeds killed out on it and graded. And that would take care of 250 places for parking. I've also talked with hockey about it. Different people there have asked me about that lot. They thought that we had built a lot there, and I said, yes, we did. And they said, it sure would be nice. It's a lot closer to the building when it's 10 below zero out, than they have to all walk all the way in from the pickleball court that the city provides plowing out there for. And thank you for doing that. So at least when people do come to our community, they have places to park, so they can at least walk into the ice arena. So one other issue is, we lose a lot of balls at football, especially the sixth grade age, when they're kicking for field goals. The fences out there in the area where the goalposts are at are not high enough. And I would like to talk with Dave about that, get an estimate, because I know he's looking at some other fencing estimates out at Coolin Camp. And if we can help and partner with that to get some higher fencing just in those particular areas to extend as to what we have there now, I think that would be greatly appreciated an awful lot. It's a little hard to go dipping in that pond when it's, you know, 30 below, or 30 above outside, even when it's 50 above. And I know I've seen kids out there trying to get footballs back out of the water. So again, thank you for, for the time and letting me speak. I know I took more than three minutes, but I do believe in Forest Lake, and as our motto is, you know, as good as it sounds, and it is a good place. And we'll continue to keep it a good place as long as we all continue to keep working together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on sign up is Eugene Hurstel.
Eugene Hurstel, 10234 204th Street, Forest Lake. And I was just, I'm here representing the pickleball people again. And it's a little bit of a frustration. We've had some communication, I've had some communication with Blake, and, but we can't have, we can't get communication with Jamie. And it's not, I don't know what's going on exactly. We've put in calls. I've come here and tried to talk, I'd like to talk face to face. And it's been a, it's frustrating me, and I haven't been involved in it until the last, you know, summer here. But, and I know some of the others are getting real frustrated and upset because of communication and that. We're not, we're not asking, we want to partner with, with the city. I'm, as you know, a conservative. I am not going to, to say, you need to spend all this money on us. No, because we're going to help out. We're going to be partner, and I'm going to work toward that. And, and to make sure that, you know, and we think that we can raise funds and partner with the city and stuff to hold it down so that, you know. But we need some communication back and forth. I came up to the, to the city offices. It was 10 after 1. I'm assuming people are done with their lunches and stuff. There's one person standing and manning the desk there and saying, well, nobody's here. Somebody else came in too. Nobody's here, and Jamie isn't ever here. And so the only way you can get ahold of her, she's in and out, blah, blah, blah. I know Jamie, she's a great person and everything, but we need, and I want to be very respectful and stuff. But if we have to start banging a little bit and stuff, and we need, we'd really like to have some communication, get back and forth, because we can, we can make it work, and we can help out as much as possible. And then also, I know you're going to, or there, as I was at the budget workshop and stuff, I just say, I know there's wants, and I know there's needs. But with this kind of economy and stuff, I would be very careful. And we all need to take care of our own homes and stuff, and, and maintenance and stuff. And I know it's, I think the last two years is approximately 17% increase in inflation, 17%. And last year, you held the budget down a little bit. What was the, can you tell me what the increase was?
We end up at about six and a half, seven.
Six and a half and seven. So if we're going to do it all up to seven, excuse me, 17% now in one shot, you know, I think we're above that 17% all the way across from last year. So, and please, I want you to represent the taxpayers too and stuff. And also, the pickleball players eventually would like lights. But we know that they're not the lights that we, the same lights that are on a softball field, or the softball fields or baseball fields. But we would like to partner in that. And I, I can say that I, I know that we can do a big part, be a big part with the city, and we'd like to, you know, work something out. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Was the end of our sign up. Those that had signed up for open forum, is there anyone else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? All right. Not seeing anyone come forward, we'll close open forum and bring back to council. Council, for your consideration tonight, our consent agenda items 6A through 6H. I will entertain a motion or any changes to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion that we approve consent agenda 6A through 6H?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. That moves us to our first regular item this evening, which is consideration of Resolution 9252301, which is the consideration of the preliminary 2024 levy. And Kevin, I believe you're starting us on this.
I guess, yeah. Mayor and city council in front of you is Resolution 9252301 to approve the 2024 preliminary tax levy and budget, while also setting the public hearing date for the final levy and the final approved 2024 budget. This is required to be approved annually by September 30th of every, of every year to submit to Washington County. Again, just remind council that whatever the preliminary tax levy is set at, at tonight's meeting and submitted to the county, the city cannot go higher than that amount, but we are able to lower that amount. So with that, unless council has any further questions on our previous budget discussions, or any questions about what is proposed in the resolution, staff recommends that you approve Resolution 9252301.
Thank you, Kevin. And as Kevin mentioned, there have been many budget topics and workshops. I think we started very early this season with the kind of overall review of the 10-year plan, and that had multiple iterations of review. And so if our discussion tonight is more abbreviated, and I'm happy to entertain a broader conversation if that's where we have, but I just also want to point to kind of the public record and the conversations that have built into this this evening. With that, I'll open it up to council on any questions you might have of staff, comments. Kind of, we're here at the, kind of the, the last consideration before the preliminary levy. So happy to entertain any questions or comments that council may have.
Madam Mayor, I'll just state that I think we made some good progress last week in our workshop to bring the proposed levy closer to where it needs to get. I'm not, by any stretch of imagination, okay with this being the final number, but I think it's a good place to start, and we have a lot of, a lot of work ahead of us.
Understood. Other comments or questions?
I think based...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Sam.
I interrupted, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm going to apologize.
Councilmember Husnick.
Make up our mind, right?
I think we just heard, you know, from a lot about parks, and we've been behind on that kind of stuff. And of course, the roads this spring were horrible. I don't, I'm open for suggestions on how we do this stuff without, without having the levy. And I know it's just a preliminary, and, and I agree with, at least that it's a start. At least there would be plenty of conversation coming up about it. And I think the, the public hearing on this thing is going to be a, a big help for everybody, so.
Understood. Councilmember Valento.
I agree with both comments that have been made. The conversations have been, there's, there have been numerous conversations. We've had a lot of people from the public come in and give their opinions. And it's, it's tough this year. There's things that the community wants, and there's the needs and the wants, and weighing both of those and weighing where we have been and where we want to go. And I think where a lot of community members want our city to go. And as Sam has mentioned, we've had, I think the, the, besides roads, I think, which we all know is an issue within the city, I think the number one people who've come in to speak at our meetings has been regarding parks. So I'll just reiterate, even though I, I appreciate the conversation we had last night, and I, I think it's a good place to start, I would love to see parks, the parks budget go up, as you all know.
When you say last night, just quick correction.
Oh, sorry, last week.
Last week, yes. It was not a meeting last night.
Thank goodness. Yes. And then the, I've, I've heard some comments regarding the community service officer. And I think that, as we all know, that has been a long time coming. That one, as of last week, not last night, we all agreed to not move forward with that one. But thinking afterwards and having communications with others, I think I would like to learn more about that and just get an idea of where that person would step in, what kind of calls they would take, what that person would, how they would help the officers, and where the officers would be going, and what calls they would be going to instead of that other person if we had a community service officer. So again, just to reiterate, I do, I like the conversation where we ended last week. And again, there's the wants and needs from the community. So this year, it's, it's a difficult conversation.
Agreed. Councilmember Roberts?
Just a couple of comments. I think it's been mentioned a number of times that we have, you know, a 6% to 7% increase that the city has no control of. Wages, insurance, just different built-in expenses that we all have in our own personal, you know, lives. So I think that is, we have to be at least at that, and really to do more for roads and some stuff for parks. I think that number could be, probably need to be in that 12% to 13%, unfortunately, if we want to improve things. We have kicked the can down a lot of just different situations. I think there's some opportunities to look at a couple of different of the positions that have been proposed, to combine those, to save some money there. It's still at a headcount. But I agree with, with the rest of the council that we've, we've made some good strides. We've got a lot, a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah. So I also agree with the comments that have been made so far. I did want to correct something that was stated during open forum, in that there was a comment around park budget being cut. And I just want to clarify, there is not a cut to the park budget that's being proposed. We had seen an earlier draft of this year's levy that had a higher number for parks. But we are moving from a $50,000 general fund, the proposal as it sits today is to move from a $50,000 general fund contribution to parks to $250,000. So it is a significant increase. It's just not as big of an increase as what was originally proposed by staff. I would highlight, this is an area where, like many topics of our, of our 10-year plan, and whether that is street projects, internal staffing, parks, building facilities and maintenance, there's a number of areas where we have known over time that we are behind. And so we have been on this mission over the last two years, for sure, of let's develop a 10-year plan, let's get some preliminary cost estimates, let's start stacking projects and prioritizing projects, and seeing what is that going to take. And this will be the first time that we have been able to see all of those pieces together, including maintenance on this building, a 10-year park plan, 10-year street plan, all of that together. And, you know, not a shock, it's a big number to get caught up in all areas. So the question is, how big of that, and how aggressive are we in this year on getting caught up on what that plan was? And if the plan's wrong, then how is the plan wrong, and how do we adjust the plan? Maybe it's not a 10-year plan, maybe it's a 15-year plan. And we're not going to solve all of those between now and December. This is an ongoing consideration. The question for us is, again, how much do we play catch-up, and how much do we take on in this upcoming year? So there is still a fair amount of conversation to be had around the individual positions and some of the specific projects that would be considered. And that is where potentially there is some room between what's being proposed tonight and what we might ultimately decide on December. I just want to really thank council for, you know, rolling up our sleeves and having the conversations with the community, and having the conversations back and forth, just to, again, identify how comfortable are we in, A, do we have the right plan, and B, what is the timeline that we're comfortable with in funding that plan, and how do we do that in a way that gathers some consensus along the way? I think the worst thing that we could do would be to have somebody push too hard to make too much catch-up. I think there's value in us having the conversation and trying to find where's their consensus. And I suspect that is what we will do here between tonight and December. And then again, this is an iterative process. This is draft one of a 10-year plan. We need to continue to do this, and we need to not ever lose sight of what is the long-term impact of our projects. We're talking right now about projects that, you know, we, what's a city contribution for the 11th Avenue County project, for example? Well, that project isn't going to take place for at least another three years, but we need to be doing that now. And so some ways, our 10-year plan needs to evolve into a 20-year plan. But considering, a few years ago, we were looking in a very myopic one-year increments. And so we've covered a lot of ground, and now is the time for us really to do our best to, as much as none of us like these numbers, to tell the public, this is what we think it's going to cost to do what it is we hear you want us to accomplish. Lights at Fenway, ag lime, how long have we been having the lights at Fenway conversation? A very long time, right? Forever. So ultimately, where does that fit? And for someone to say, here is on the plan, and here's how we're going to fund it, we have a lot of ground left to cover, but we have, at least we have something on concrete, concrete on paper that we can now be having this conversation. So thanks to staff for getting us to this point. Thanks to the community members who have continued to provide input. We're going to need you to continue to provide input. And thanks for council for kind of facilitating the conversation and saying, you know, doing the hard work on, again, where is their consensus? What are the areas where absolutely we need to move forward versus where do we need to have some more conversation or gather some information? Push staff a little further of, this isn't quite yet a fully developed idea. Again, we've done a lot of work, but there's still a fair amount ahead of us. I think the worst thing we can do is to say, eh, it's going to be fine, and just go low. We, we, we know that we are facing a large number, and I think we need to have our eyes wide open. We don't need to tackle it all again in one year, but we at least need to know, what is that going to, ultimately going to cost, and how is, how are we going to, you know, accomplish? is that going to, ultimately going to cost and how are we going to, you know, accomplish that as a community? So with that, I'm happy to support the preliminary levy this evening, and I would move that council approve Resolution 9252301. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, questions? Go ahead.
One comment. Knowing that this is preliminary is the big thing here, and I think it's between now and December 11th, we've got some opportunity to really, my ears are open to anybody that wants to talk about it. And if you've got a good suggestion on how we can change things or fix things, I'm all ears. And you can contact me anytime you want on that particular subject, or any subject that has to do with the council here. So it's very important that we have a starting point, and so happy to support this resolution so far, so.
To that point, we should put, I know staff's working together on a summary document based on what we're assuming we're going to approve tonight, kind of a summary document to help communicate to the community, what are the pieces? As I mentioned, there's a lot of layers to this, and this has been a working session for, for sure, last six months. I wouldn't expect the public to watch every single public meeting together. And so once that information's available, I would encourage us to dedicate some specific workshop time to walk through that, the elements of that 10-year plan in another layer of detail, just as an opportunity to kind of provide the public to come along with us, to see where we are. I would envision a portion of a workshop being dedicated specifically to parks, a portion dedicated specifically to streets, just again, to review for the public and for us as council to kind of continue to have the iterative process of what, you know, what's included, what's not included, and what does that look like? So I think that would be important as we have, you know, regularly scheduled workshop meetings, and let's dedicate some specific time for those topics. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Thank you so much. Council will move into our next discussion item, which is Washington County Household Hazardous Waste Facility and Environmental Center. Abby, I'll have you tee this up, and then there are three resolutions for council's consideration tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Bayne, and members of the council. As you might remember, earlier this year, the city entered into agreement with Washington County to swap some land, real property the city owns in exchange for real property the county owns. The county would like to build a northern environmental center on the city's land. However, at this time, the land swap hasn't occurred. The county is prepared to move forward with a grading permit that has been approved by the council. However, because they don't own the land, we've kind of got a little bit of some jurisdictional issues as the watershed district won't release permits for them to be able to grade at this time. So before you tonight are a few documents that can help the county keep moving on their journey of getting that construction started this year. So the first document before you is an easement. It's just putting an easement over a very large wetland on the property. This would be required if the county owned the property, if the city owned the property, if Joe Schmo owned the property. Time of development, we put easements over wetlands. Next would be approving a vegetated wetland buffer and an upland habitat maintenance agreement. This is a document that puts a buffer around that wetland and says, we'll keep that in that pristine condition. And then lastly, a resolution approving a stormwater management facility maintenance agreement. This essentially says they will put in the stormwater facilities as approved as part of their site plan. So the intent of these documents is to, for the city to help the water, or help the county move forward, but not obligate the city in the long run. All this land, when it transfers over, these agreements transfer with, are bound to the land, and will transfer then to the county in the long run. That makes sense? So the council should review the enclosed easement and agreements, and if favorable, staff would recommend approval of all of them. And yes, there are three separate motions and resolutions I'd ask for you tonight. Certainly happy to review them, but they are listed on, it looks like, page 118 in your packet.
Thank you, Abby. Council, questions for Abby, comments?
Just to see, I think we're just dotting the i's and crossing the t's here, it sounds.
Councilmember Erickson, do you have a question?
Yeah, just one quick question regarding the resolution related to the stormwater management. So the county will be responsible for maintaining that stormwater, everything associated with that, correct?
That is correct.
All right, perfect, thank you.
That was my question. I just wanted to make sure we weren't locking ourselves into a long term. This is an interim to get them started. Once we've conveyed, they have long-term.
That is correct. It is their project. They would be responsible for those maintenance obligations.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 09-25-23-02, the wetland easement.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Roberts have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question before that, sorry.
No, that's okay. Can we do during discussion?
Sure.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Roberts?
Just, and maybe it was in the packet, I missed it. What is the delay on the transfer of the property? Was there anything that came up?
It just really comes down, we had the plat. The plat's been approved, the mayor will be executing it tonight. And then there's just kind of some of those very customary things that happen with land transfers. Being public entities, we still have to go through the process of title work, getting deeds, getting them scheduled. And so it's just a matter of timing more than anything. I think the county was maybe well-versed in getting all of the documents and everything ready for this construction of the building, and then, you know, getting that land actually swapped out has kind of just delayed a little.
Understood. We have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Anyone up for the next resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 09252303, the vegetated wetland buffer and habitat maintenance agreement as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. And next, Resolution 9252304. I'll just go ahead and make a motion that council approve Resolution 9252304. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is the Fire Relief Association Benefit Level Increase. Chief Newman?
Mayor, members of the council up in front of you for consideration is a increase to our fire relief pension from $5,900 per year to $6,100 a year. The Forest Lake Fire Department has a retirement account, which is separate from city accounts. It's pretty much a sole vehicle for paid-on-call firefighters' retirement. Back in 2019, the Relief Association met with the Joint Fire Board to set forth kind of a vehicle that would give us more consistent increases instead of coming to the Joint Fire Board and then the council at 10-year increments. And so we set a number at 150%. Once our, if our account is above 150% funding ratio, then we would bring that increase recommendation to the Joint Fire Board, and if it was approved by the Joint Fire Board, then we would bring it to the council. And so on September 7th of this year, we brought it to the Joint Fire Board. At that time, our funding ratio was 193%. And at a 3-0 vote, they voted to approve a $200 or $200 increase in our retirement account. So that is what we were bringing forth to you for discussion and hopefully approval.
Understood. Just if I could add just a little bit more color on to this, this was an area, as Chief had mentioned, that several years ago had lagged, and we hadn't done an increase for a number, a fairly long period of time. This is an area where, as long as the fund is solvent, the city is the guarantor, but this is not a direct impact to our general fund. And working together with our partners in Columbus, over the last several years, we've gotten into a mechanism of annual review. And as Chief mentioned, if we are within the 150% funding levels, we have a threshold of somewhat of an automatic pending council approval increase with the goal that we just don't get behind again and that we are continuing to add to that benefit. So there's just a little bit of background information. It's not a general fund-specific item, but the city ultimately is a guarantor if there were to be a fund deficit. The other thing I would just say more from an advocacy perspective of this is I feel like retirement is a key element to our firefighter benefit package. And with our ongoing goal of maintaining our paid-on-call model, I'm glad we're continuing to review these benefits, and I'm happy to support the increase tonight, because again, I think it's important that we as a community continue to invest in the paid-on-call model. We would be having a much different budget conversation if we had to move to duty crews or some sort of a fully-staffed fire department. So with that, I would move to approve the council's approval of the benefit increase for the Fire Relief Association.
I'll second. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion, we'll take Councilmember Valento as the second. Any discussion on this topic?
Just one thing, just one question, and I just, all I want to do is ask the question, how long do they have to serve before they can draw on this retirement fund?
Great question. So vesting is at 10 years, and at that, once they've reached that 10-year period, they'll actually get 60% of what they've earned in that 10-year period. And then for each year that they have another year of service, it increases 4%. So for instance, at the current retirement, somebody that had on 10 years of service would make $35,400 at that 10-year period. And then for each year they serve, it's an additional 4% until they hit 20 years, and at 20 years, it's full vesting.
That answered my question. I just, I know we had gone through these numbers before when I served on the Joint Fire Board, but it's kind of nice to just get a refresher on that. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. We have two discussion items on our agenda this evening. Just a quick note for those that are watching, our discussion topics are workshop-only topics. Anything that we talk about this evening on this, in this portion of the meeting that requires vote, will come back before council on an official agenda. So this is intended to be more of an informal working session. And our first item this evening is a presentation from Republic Services. Karen, Patrick, any tea up before we invite Bev to join us?
I can do it. Mayor Maine, Bev Mathiessin is here with Republic Services, and she wants to provide some additional information to the council on basically how great we're doing with our recycling and our review services since Republic has taken over the contract. So I'll just let Bev go ahead and take it from here.
Thank you, Karen. Bev, good to see you again.
Thank you. It's so good to be back. Karen, is this set up or, you know what? Hold on one second, and I will. Sorry about this, hold on. We're probably going to go through slides on mine.
And I can get started on some of this later in the presentation. I think those visuals are probably more important. So in the interest of time, thank you again for having me back. It's always good to visit with you and bring you updates. And today is outside of that annual report, and I have lots of really great stories to share with you. First of all, I know that a lot of you have worked with Republic Services for a few years now. Some of you are more new to us. So I wanted to share with you some of the advancements that we've made in our company in terms of sustainability. And as a leader in environmental services, we are really truly committed to offering to our customers the most complete environmental solutions. We've had some acquisitions in the last year that have really, really shifted the direction of our company. We're no longer a hauler necessarily. And so, so, yeah, we're getting there. So anyway, I wanted to share both our vision and our promise around sustainability. And I won't read through that, you have it in your packet, but it is very clear. And again, we've really come a long way from being a hauler here to being really an environmental solutions company. There, I think we've read a lot lately about train wrecks, hazardous accidents, those sorts of things. And now we're able to assist our municipalities in those types of concerns that do come up in today's world. Also, very happy to announce our new polymer center for the recycling of plastics and to be able to really bring that full cycle. Our first polymer center is, should be opened yet this year, and that's in Las Vegas. We have plans for three more across the country, one in the Midwest. We're not certain exactly where that location is going to be, but as soon as I find out, I'll be sure to share that with you. What's really nice is, and really important here, is we can truly control that piece of the recycling from the curb to actually recycling into product for our consumer goods companies. And that's real important, because right now, a lot of our plastics are downcycled, a very strong percentage. We're seeing plastics recycled into carpeting, textiles, even the shoes I'm wearing today. And so it's, it will be very nice to be able to control this full circle and actually increase the percent of plastics that are recycled, fully recycled, and to help companies like Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola, they, and other alike companies, Nestle, PepsiCo, all of those companies have some very, very wonderful sustainability goals. And so we'll be able to assist them. We've got currently a contract with Coca-Cola to help them reach their 50% goal here in the next few years. So some very interesting and wonderful stories there about what we're doing to take sustainability and put it in action. I would encourage you to go to our website and visit our sustainability plan or our report there to see what we're doing nationwide and how that affects us here locally. On top of that, another area that I'm very proud of and have spent many years being involved with is our Committed to the Community National Neighborhood Promise Grants. Locally here, I've been, in the last few years, we've been able to participate in some of those. A 501(c)(3) can apply for a grant, and some of them I've listed here. One was the Rondo Neighborhood Garden Project. Another one that we did was building a ramp for a disabled veteran, and he had been homebound for quite some time. And then now this year, we will be working at the Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center. They provide a lot of services for folks in need of social and mental health services. And so if there is a 501(c)(3) in your community that needs some help, needs a project done, please, please send them to either myself or to our website, and we can see if we can help out there. So just wanted to call some attention there. We were, we awarded over $2.5 million this year to 12 different nonprofits. This is the good part, as if there wasn't enough. We've had quite a nice history here at Forest Lake. Back in 2019, we started a collaborative journey that has just continued to grow and blossom. In May of 2019, you folks issued an RFP for your waste services. And Republic was awarded that contract on July 17th back then. It didn't give us a lot of time to put things together. We had 18 days from the time that council voted yes to the time we started servicing the residents. That is a very short window of time, if anyone's ever gone through this before, to order carts, to also, we didn't have even an address list, and to determine what the needs of the public were, get the carts out and start servicing. I want to I want to give some special kudos here to some of our city partners, Karen and Patrick, we work very closely with in all of the planning that we did. The fire and police department were wonderful. They allowed us to stage our carts right on their site there, which made things much more efficient for the delivery of those carts, and then also for the swapping out of carts when needed. So that was, was wonderful. And then, of course, the partnerships with parks and making sure that we got the services aligned for our parks. And like I said, in August then, as of August 4th, we started collection. When we started, that first year, or partial year, participation rate for recycling was at about 72%. Now granted, we're not looking for 100% there. I don't know that that's realistic, but that was a little slim. We knew we had some work to do, but we gathered that data very quickly in our, our relationship to make sure that we knew where we were and understood where we wanted to go and, and work on the planning. Contamination rate from our sample was at 18%. We did an audit that year, and that's relatively high. And again, we knew we had some work together, so we worked with staff and came up with some really great education plans and, and got that out to the community. And then March 2020, yes, we all remember that, where the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 pandemic. What we saw there were, were increased volumes on the residential side, decreased volumes on the commercial side with that. And during that time, also a national CDL shortage of drivers. I will say that we've weathered that storm quite well at Republic Services, and, and your drivers are tenured. We continue to recruit, and one of the reasons I think that we've been very successful is we continue to be on the list for a company that, you know, a sustainability company where people want to live and work. They want to work for us. And so we're, we're very proud of that. And then recycling in 2021, recycling participation did continue to increase. Our contamination rate, we weren't seeing decrease like we had wanted, but we knew with time, getting messaging out over and over again, we knew with time, we would see results if we continued on down the path of recycling education. And then in last year, recycling contamination improved to a 10%. And so we were very excited about that and continued to, to do education in the community and continue on with our education calendars. And then participation rates by 2022 had risen to 78%. And I had the pleasure of talking with many residents. Some had called and said, I really don't want to recycle, come and get this cart. And, and I would explain, well, let's talk about, you know, let's talk about what do you throw in the trash at home? Why don't you give it a try? Let's start with two things. You get your newspaper every day, you buy milk, let's start with that. And you know, after following up with a few of those residents, we saw that, wow, this is pretty easy. And they were happy, and they were able to downsize, in some cases then, their trash size, which allowed them to save some money as well. So it was definitely a win there. And then in 2023, we're seeing our momentum carry on. We're about a 79% participation rate. And then, and then we will do an audit yet this year and, and see where the contamination is. And so we've made great strides here in Forest Lake, and it's been quite a great journey for us, one that's been very collaborative. And I just want to thank all of you for that as well, for, it, it took courage. You had, you had a previous hauler that served you for many, many years. Took a lot of courage to make a change. And we will continue to, to go down the path of being a great partner for you. The next piece, I wanted to give you a breakdown when it comes to rates. We get a lot of questions. I know staff get some questions, certainly around the first of the year. People get their new bill, and they're like, oh, this really went up, what happened? And rightfully so. And so I wanted to give you something that if you have a resident that gives you a call of concern over rates, you can easily explain that. Certainly, you can always send them to me. I wanted to break this out. We've got a trash collection fee written in the contract that we agreed on back in 2019 with a fixed annual increase of 3.5%. So that is a fixed cost there. And then we've got also our recycling rate. And so that is also a fixed annual increase as well. I will say at 3.5%, that's not keeping up, but we, we, we are entered into a contract, and we've honored that contract. Right now, with CPI, water, sewer, trash, we're seeing contracts being written around that 5% range now. And so just know that that is a fixed, a fixed rate. Then we have some other variables that can, can vary year to year, and that would be the county disposal fee for trash. And you can see that the percentage in 2023 was an 18.4%, and that's, that's a, that is a percentage on the rate. And then also, this, this year for 2024, I did see in the minutes that were approved, I don't have the official letter as of yet, but that looks to be 17.5%, so a little less of an increase over last year. And then the county environmental charge is 35% here. And then the state tax, which has been pretty steady for quite some time at 9.75%. So I hope you find this helpful in that we're holding our costs down as much as possible and honoring our contract at a 3.5% fixed. And so when I break this down, when a resident calls in and just saying, I just don't understand, why does it cost this? Why did my bill go up when I'm told that your increase didn't go up much? That's when I just, you know, I try to illustrate to them and, and communicate that there are only some things that we're, we can control here at Republic Services, and I think we've done a very fine job of that for you. If you have questions about this, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm always available for that, as is, I know Karen, I've worked with her quite a bit, and Patrick. We can all help you walk through any of those conversations that should come up. So in closing, I just want to thank you for an opportunity to speak again this evening and get to know more of you. And if you have any questions, by all means, please don't hesitate. We're here to serve you.
Thank you. Council, questions that you might have for Bev this evening? Councilmember Erickson?
Just one quick question. The current contract, what's the run date on that?
It expires December of '24.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bev this evening? Bev, one of the topics that was hot in both the news and also here locally, when we entered into the contract, was just the secondary market on recycling. Can you just speak to what that looks like? And I can, I would expect that that maybe has some impact related to the county cost related to recycling, but can you just kind of speak to what that, what that dynamic looks like now it's not in the news as much, but?
Yeah, and, and it was in the news for quite some time. The commodity markets are quite volatile. You've seen, we've seen them go down after China soared, when China was no longer taking our recycling, or the world's recycling, let's say. I want to also make sure you understand that the recycling that we take from your city, we, our buyers of the recycling product are either local or Midwest. On occasion, it's within our nation. So that is staying here, it's not being shipped abroad. But yes, right now, some of the commodities have taken a little dip again. They're not where we thought they would be right now, but again, we've seen, we saw them come down, the value. We've seen at, sometimes with cardboard, it's difficult to, we have great contracts out there with our buyers, but it's sometimes difficult to, to, to unload some of the product in terms of cardboard. There have been times where we have paid to have the material taken and recycled. And so it has been volatile over the time of this contract. We've weathered that storm quite well. The plastics right now are, are struggling a bit. Some of the metals are still okay. But again, a lot of volatility there, and that's where I think your contract has suited you well with a fixed rate. There are some contracts that vary each and every year with a 12-month lookback based on what that is. And it's, in a good year, that's very good for the residents. In a year that commodities are not doing well, then everybody has to pay more. With a contract such as this, everybody understands what the rate will be each and every year for the next five years.
Understood. Thank you for that detail.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Bev? All right. Thank you for the update this evening. Much appreciated.
Thank you again for your time.
All right. Our next item this evening, again, under the discussion workshop topic, is the Broadway Avenue Bridge lighting. And Abby, I think you're starting us on this topic?
I'll start, Janet. Sure. I think the last time that this was brought back, brought to the council, the question was whether or not you wanted staff to really kind of be working on this. I think that at the time, the council said, go figure out what that cost is really going to be. Looking at the, the cost associated with this project, it'd be about $10,000. We have talked with the company that would install the lighting for the city. They do still have room on their schedule. I think they're just waiting on us to do that. Done preliminary outreach with the chamber, just very high level. Is there any, do you think there would be interest? No commitments have been made by anybody. In recent discussions with Nanette, and very respectfully for the chamber, they have their own fundraising that they'll be doing this time of year, so it's not necessarily something that I would wholly count on them to help us with that. So bringing this back before you to let you know, that'd be about a $10,000 project, and passing it over to the council to discuss.
That's council, councilmember Erickson, it looks like.
Yeah, I know as a member of the board of the chamber, we just had a recent retreat and spoke about how we will, you know, certainly help promote, you know, different activities, just like we do with the street dance, but, you know, we can't participate in funds collection, that sort of thing. So I think, you know, if we move forward with this project as a community, you know, hopefully the city will be able to be a partner in it from a funds collection standpoint, but not, I wouldn't look to them to be a financial source, you know, just given the topic of the discussion tonight with the levy we're considering, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to fund it. That being said, I think that there are, you know, a number of things that has happened this last year that community leaders, business, from the business community, have really stepped up and said, yeah, I want to be a part of that. I mean, the street dance, for example, wonderful, you know, quickly got funding for that. And so I would love to see us continue to pursue this. And, you know, I know the chamber will play a role in promotion, that I know for certain, but, and I think that there are several business leaders in the community and just residents, non-business leaders that would love to see this addition come this holiday season.
Mayormain, if I might just add, in speaking with Nanette, I think there was some confusion. City staff would not envision at all the chamber collecting money on the city's behalf. Any donations that the city seeks for any of our events or promotions or whatever, come straight to the city. We wouldn't want any third party intermarriage.
Yeah, great point of clarification. I was speaking more broadly of our board conversation.
Question, just to clarify your perspective, from a city funding perspective, it sounds like you're in favor of city promotion, but on the funding side, is that not this year? Is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but also?
No, great question. No, I don't think the city needs to fund this, but I think we should support it. I think that there might even be poss, again, I wasn't part of the conversation about the scope of it, but maybe there's even a scaled back initial version that we could stair-step to that $10,000 level, but maybe there's, you know, an interim step that we can take. And the city ought to support that by allowing it to happen, but let's find funding from the community.
Understood, understood. Other perspectives, thoughts?
So, excuse me. To your point, Councilmember Erickson, there is a scaled down version of that, would just be the outline of the bridge instead of every single, you know, piece of the bridge that comes in last, I saw the quote at $4,400. I think it would be a good stair-step where the, the city would, you know, we would do that, partner with sponsors to raise the $4,400 would be pretty easy. You purchase those lights, and then if it's a success, the next year, you would go to that next level and do the entire bridge. Just be involved in the street dance and soliciting for sponsorships. I, I think that to achieve that $4,400 mark with the city doing the things they've already done, I know that Dave has been in contact with the vendor and worked out a source for power, if the city's willing to participate in paying for that power, and then also the collection of the, the funds that the, or the chamber seems to be more than willing to promote it and get the word out, looking for sponsorships. And I too agree that we should try to do this in, in 2023, at that lower level.
When you say, when you say purchase lights, is it, is there an additional capital purchase that's required, or is it a?
In that $4,400, that is the purchase and install.
And install.
And to remove the lights. The additional fee would be storage. If we wanted to do that ourselves, I'm assuming we'd have that space to save $400, but the vendor would also store those.
Councilmember Husnick, or Councilmember Valento, and thoughts?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's the theme of the night.
We're going to have to raise our hand, right?
Yeah. I need a buzzer to start digging in.
Do we have an estimate for how much it would cost for electricity? I assume we don't. And when we talk about funding from, I would prefer funding to not come from the city, especially looking at today's budget, the preliminary budget, where we all want to go, looking at the 10-year plan. So my concern when we're talking about the $4,400 or $10,000, is that only taken into consideration the purchasing of lights, storage of lights, takedown setup, and not electricity? Yes?
Correct.
Just for clarification on the record, the $10,000 included the estimate for security, or security, electricity. The $4,400, we hadn't estimated, but you'd add on, I'd assume just that difference there. I'd have to do my quick math.
The original quote on the, the full scale was 8,800 or change, so you were?
8946.
So you're figuring that much difference in electricity, I guess.
Yeah, that extra $1,000 for the electricity connection and the service.
Factoring, you'll have to get, contract to get right away permits and bonding insured and probably traffic closure, so we kind of padded out $300, $500 for that, that cost as well. It's all LED lights, so it's, it's probably like powering up another two streetlights that are LED. It's not a heck of a lot of money, but I mean, like having a couple more lights.
Councilmember Husnick?
Yeah, I certainly support the idea. It's just, you know, we just, if the, we can come up with the, start with the $4,400, whatever, I think it's a great idea. And I think, you know, it's the LED lighting, that has proven to be a really economical way of producing light. It's not very expensive, so hopefully we can make this work out somehow.
So I love the idea. My, my concern is on the logistics of solicitation of, and securing enough sponsorship in time for when we have to make the commitment. With all respect to city staff, it's not, and it's not a city staff thing, it is a, I think it's a government thing. I think we are, it is awkward, it's just awkward for us to be soliciting donations. It is a different thing where we have, if we have a, a business owner that's promoting an event, that is a different ask than if it is coming from the city, especially in a year when those business owners also know that we are considering a fairly sizable levy. I just, it's, it's a harder ask for a city to make, and without us having a fundraising partner who's kind of taking the lead that's outside of staff, I'm concerned about being able to do this in enough time to also be able to make the commitment.
to make the commitment. Not to say it can't be done, but for us this year, because in absence of, I think there's probably going to have to be a contract signed soon. And so in absence of those commitments, we have to then, it would then fall, I'm assuming, to the city to fund that. And again, we do many things well as a city, and our staff are very, very capable. But to spin up a new program that we haven't, you know, previously had, and to solicit enough donations to fund that gap, I have no doubt that somebody that was not specifically related to the city would be able to do that very quickly. And so if we could identify a partner to take the lead on the fundraising side, then from a staff supporting the permitting and all of the logistics, I'm happy to support it. It's just, I'm not sure we're, we have enough runway to be successful on the fund-rai- fundraising side. Because again, it's just, I think it's an awkward ask coming from the city. I, I wish we were in a spot where we could just fully fund it. But also, I think this is the year where we shouldn't be looking for a last minute ad. I think the messaging's challenging when we're also going to the community with a fairly sizable levy increase, which I know has already been acknowledged.
Madam Mayor, I can appreciate that. I think the difference that, I mean, we have an established program with the holiday, you know, hometown holidays. So this is just building on that. So it's not like this whole thing is a new concept. Well, the bridge lighting is.
Yep.
I think we've had great participation and, you know, great track record with that. We're, we're taking some steps to just even improve that experience this year. You know, I think that, again, just based on some, you know, even some personal involvement with some recent activities that, you know, have been a tremendous success. I don't think that a 44 or a college $5,000, you know, if there's some right away stuff, I don't think that's a big lift. I really don't for the, the community members that have demonstrated a history of wanting to participate and be a part of something, it's something special. And I think this would be another example of that.
Understood. Fair point. Is this then, are we specific, Dave, go ahead.
Maybe Abby was going to say this as well, but just perspective on timeline and talking with the contractor, he would need to have, he wanted to be on his agenda, be November 10th would be the latest he could put the lights up, which we would then need to make a decision by our October 9th council meeting to give him time to do right away permitting, which I'm guessing will take at least two to three weeks, get all the approval. So if we waited till the second meeting in October, it'd be too late. I don't think he'd get permits in time. But I believe that's just kind of why we brought to discussion here tonight, because we'd have to make a decision either way by October 9th. And that's kind of what the contractor would be expecting to know if we could put on the calendar or not.
I mean, with that information, it gives us a couple of weeks to see if there's an appetite for community funding.
Are you expecting, so tell me more about what you think that, what does that look like? Like, is there already a, a list of identified kind of supporters that we're going back to? Or is this a, what does that solicitation plan look like?
Well, I know, I mean, Councilmember Roberts has been very involved in, in a number of things. I mean, we, all members of the chamber, or some of us members of the chamber, I think it's just start there and just talk to those chamber members, community members that have demonstrated a history of involvement in different activities and just test the waters and see, you know, see what the outcome is. We'll not, we'll, we'll know before that October 9th meeting.
Who is this?
Councilmember Roberts is game.
So I would, I mean, talking with Nan this afternoon, that the chamber would, would lead any promotional of it. They just don't want to collect the money on this piece. And so, you know, referring back to the street dance situation, there were, the feedback we got, because we just, it was just thrown together, we just asked through some random peoples, how come I wasn't asked to be involved?
Ah.
So with that being said, I just, I think, I, I think it would not be a heavy lift. I think if you, you know, I would, you know, I'm going out on a limb here a little bit, but have it three quarters funded by the, the meeting on the night of the, of October. I don't think it would be a problem.
So there's a point person that's going to do this, whoever that may be, and then just giving the funds to the city to, correct? So we're not involved in the actual solicitation.
No, that, that is not-
Reception of the funds.
Right, right.
And that would give us, whether or not we can make that decision on October 9th or whatever day it is.
That eases my concern. So if there is a thought that there is, like, if the city is simply the funding, you know, the, the collection of funds, I, I think that is what we should, is a role we should play. I just don't want the expectation that we're asking staff to roll out a solicitation plan and reach out. But if, if those are already warm leads and if that path has been started, Patrick, in my sense, I see you nodding a bit, is that a more acceptable, attainable that we-
I mean, we're very happy to take the funds and whatever they are raised and by the deadline and do that. It's just, I want to make sure what our role was.
And if we were to green light this, here we are, you know, last week in September, it gives us a couple of weeks to at least-
Up to weeks.
Tally some, see where we are in fundraising and come back for a decision first week in October, or first meeting in October for funding. And then Dave, does that provide enough execution time?
Yep. That will give us enough time to get the permits and all that stuff. I just feel if we get to that second meeting in October, we're going to run out of time because then you run into a snag with permitting and then.
Yeah. All right. I think, I think from the council's perfect, perspective, we're just agreeing that this might be a good idea.
Right.
You know, it's separate from making the decision about funding and-
I just want to make sure that we are, we have enough room for an off ramp if that, we found out that costs were different or the funding didn't come through. Just want to make sure we have an off ramp, which is why it's on the meeting agenda tonight. And it seems like there is sufficient time for us to reverse course if we weren't able to pull it together.
Yeah, if the funding isn't in place by that meeting night, that's it. I don't think we should take any chances after that.
Okay. Everyone, okay, we don't need a vote tonight, but just want to make sure because-
Can I just ask just a little bit of direction? So you'll want it back on your agenda on October 9th to take formal action. We'll need some communication before the 9th, just so that we can prepare any sort of documents or anything. I will be out of the office until October 6th. So Pat would be your best point of contact.
Yeah, if, if you've met your goal and you have the funds, call me, we'll deposit it and we'll write it up and go from there.
Just to point of clarification, what is, what is our go no-go number? Is it 44?
I mean, I could, you know, that, that gives us extra weeks to get those extra sponsors. If the city's more comfortable with the full amount by October 10th, that's fine. I could, I'm pretty confident that we can get three quarters of that by the 9th and then finish that before the 10th, you know, before installation. I don't, I don't see any issue with that.
I just, I just think you need to give us a status report on how much you fundraised by, like, the Wednesday before the meeting so we can, or actually the Tuesday before the meeting, so we can just write up a quick summary for the council and then go from there.
Summary of fundraising. And then, Dave, can you have a kind of a contract final cost estimate for us to approve also that evening?
Yep.
Or consider that evening?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We had a plan? Sounds good. Okay, we'll close our workshop topic and let's move into staff updates. We'll start with Karen.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to thank Bev for bringing her information in and maybe just highlight the reason why she's here before the end of that contract is at this point in time, we would need to put an RFP out if we were going to be seeking a new provider. I think with the relationship and how it's been developed, I think it's great that Republic Services has delivered what they said they were going to deliver and more. So I just wanted to thank Bev for bringing that information in. And certainly if the public has any questions about their bills, it's okay to contact me or Bev directly. And prior to January, I will be making sure that there's communication going out about the bill before it arrives, so that people understand, you know, the increase that happens is already built into the current contract. So I just wanted to point that out. And then I don't have any other updates at this time.
Thank you, Karen. Abby?
The only thing I want to note for the record, our planner, Ken Roberts, will celebrate his one-year anniversary with the city this week. So if you see Ken, congratulate him.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. And do I understand you're going to be out of the office for a bit?
I am going to be out of the office the Wednesday of this week through Friday of next week.
Enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Patrick?
No report tonight.
Amanda?
No report.
Dave?
Nothing to update.
All right. Chief Peterson?
No updates.
Chief Newman?
No updates.
Kevin?
I'll just want to update. I'll be at a conference Wednesday through Friday of this week, but I will be checking emails so that, so you're aware. If you do have some budget questions that come through, I will be checking throughout the day and at night. Just, I'll be responding to those at that time. But other than that, no further updates.
Very good. By way of just update, and I, you know, I mentioned during our budget portion of the discussion, I'd like to put together kind of a calendar of major components of the, agenda time for major components of the budget. We should talk as council of whether, there's, there's some idea these have already been covered in workshop. And so discussing them again in workshop may or may not be effective. I'm open to us doing, if it's a Q and A town hall or some sort of an open house, we should talk about what does that look like. I think the community is looking for some additional information and some engagement. And so I think we are most effective when we address that all together. I know everyone's having individual conversations as well, which is also great. But I think there's a need for just some broad community understanding. And so us to get either some specific time where we're, it may be a little less formal and are able to invite the community and to ask questions and certainly also see the information. There's a lot of information that's been digested or kind of pared up to this point. So however we can get that out, let's get some calendar time dedicated to that here. I'm thinking, you know, end of October, first of November, before we get too deep into the holiday season. And while there's still time to, for us to have conversations based on that feedback before we move into consideration of final levy. So something we can bring forward further.
All right. Let's start with council updates. Councilmember Roberts. All right. Councilmember Valento.
On September 14th, I attended the shoreline and boat launch study. And it was just, it was the first meeting, preliminary discussion, just going over ideas, looking at pictures, just really discussing what we, what roads we would like to explore. So it was very collaborative. I think it was a really good starting point. And we're going to, our next meeting, I believe, is in November. And I think between now and then, we ended the meeting just discussing where, where we started, where our ideas kind of evolved to. And there might be some communication in between, just to see updated pictures and updated ideas. So it was a really good starting point. I'm excited for the November meeting.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Husnick?
No updates tonight. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Erickson?
Just a couple of comments. I think in the Republic's presentation, one of the charges that are called out in there is that county environmental charge. If I recall from a groundbreaking, isn't that what, what's funding that new environmental center from Washington County? Is that-
It's probably a part of it.
Yeah. So I just encourage the citizens. I mean, they're paying these bills to take advantage of that. We're so blessed to have that coming our way.
Agreed.
And then we just heard again tonight, a guest call out communication, being a frustration. And I just want to encourage, you know, the staff and everybody, we have great partners, whether it's the Lake Association, pickleball players, we just, everyone of us has to do our part and keep those lines of communication open.
Great. Great points. I've kind of sprinkled in my updates here along the way. So I don't have anything further other than to just really thank everyone for being here. Last week's workshop session, had some observers. Tonight, we had a great participation. It's great to hear from the different groups weighing in on topics that are important. It helps us to inform a better decision. And so I appreciate everyone's engagement in getting us to this point. With that, we are going to move into a closed session. Is there somebody that would like to move us into a closed session?
Madam Mayor, I move to close the meeting. I moved into closed section pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot 05 subdivision B for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to the city's authority. The closed session will be held in the fourth state conference room and will commence immediately. Once the closed session is completed, the city council will reconvene the open portion of the meeting in the council chambers. As there are no other items on the agenda, once back in session, the council will adjourn.
Move, is there a second?
I'll second.
Move, motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And we're in closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.